Okay, 11 o'clock. We're recording, Micah? Okay. All right, welcome everybody to Newtown Township Board of Supervisors Work Session. Today is Monday, May 18th. And according to our agenda, right now, we have one item and the item being Newtown Business. That's the correct item, I'm off my phone here. But anyway, we'll continue our discussion from Wednesday in regards to Newtown Business and the COVID-19 virus. And John, since this is your, this is your topic here, we'll start off with you. Go right ahead.
Okay, thanks. I think Dennis and I had some discussion prior to this and I know Dennis talked to some people at the Middletown Township. I talked to Tom Tostie, who is also a Middletown Township Supervisor and member of the Bucks County COVID-19 Task Force, which I think many of us have read about in the, in the news. And if, if it's okay, I could go over some of the discussion points I've had with him. But the main item I think we might want to discuss is whether Newtown Township should implement some kind of committee, ad hoc committee, task force, or whatever you call it, in a similar way that Middletown Township has done. And Mr. Tostie explained the reasoning why Middletown did what they did and what they're currently planning to be doing. And I'm sure Dennis might have some further thoughts about that after speaking to one of the supervisors of Middletown. So if you don't mind, I could just mention some of the talking points I had with Mr. Tostie.
Sure, go right ahead.
Well, he mentioned, we first talked about the Middletown Township Committee. It is not a regular committee. It was started when Mr. Tostie said the county was establishing a task force that he would be part of. And the township thought it was a good idea to set up its own committee to get ready. And he said, it doesn't look like they're really going to get going until June 6th. And what he was recommending is that while the township could, you know, organize this committee, that they wait for the county to come up, the county task force or whatever, to come up with some of its guidelines. And then the local areas might decide how to best implement those guidelines in their own locality. So that was some of the things we discussed. He's, he's not sure how the Middletown Township Supervisors feel about waiting, but you know, that's the plan. He discussed that the Middletown Committee is, his idea was to consist of business and community leaders. It already has, for example, system place on there, food bank. Tostie recommended a worker or a customer be, if the township like Newtown is going to implement something like this, be included. Small business owners, et cetera. He also mentioned that he's thinking about workers. As you know, Tostie is Chair of the AFL-CIO Central Labor Council. And that's his role on the Bucks County Task Force. He discussed, we discussed the testing restaurant workers versus taking the temperatures, that sort of thing, to, you know, protect workers. At the county level, I mean, members included a welcome center representative, a business owners, Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Tostie is a labor liaison. He suggested that the, the goal is to, they want businesses to start getting ready now to open. And they need guidance in advance. And you know, that's one of the main ideas of setting this up. We talked about how every township is different. And the guidelines from the Bucks County may need to be modified to fit our particular needs. And I mentioned some things where maybe Newtown is unique. For example, many businesses are located in private shopping centers. And you know, we must therefore have an input from the property owners to allow us or to work with us if we decide to do anything to help businesses located in the shopping centers. He mentioned the idea that we talked about, you know, at the county level where they discussed the idea that perhaps they could pass an ordinance or a resolution that townships could adopt to allow outdoor dining in parking lots. He also mentioned the same kind of safety concerns that Phil mentioned at our last meeting. And we started talking about, well, you know, how do you maintain safety if you're going to allow that to parking lots? And again, this is something, you know, we'd have to talk about with business. The property owners maybe putting up some kind of temporary bumps or whatever. He then said that we should look to the Erie County website for its extensive list of COVID-19 resources regarding guidances and so on. The only other thing I would like to mention at this point is that a local restaurant has already put up a survey asking potential customers what would make them comfortable having, going to their restaurant. And some of the questions, I mean, the fact that they're asking these questions of potential patrons means they're looking for some guidance as to what proper things they should do to make people comfortable and feel safe, even though there are guidances coming down the pipe from various sources. I wanted a couple of things, you know, they wanted to know, do you prefer that all the guests coming to the restaurant have their temperature taken? Do you think there should be some kind of table dividers, even though we have six feet separating tables? Would you prefer to dine indoors or outdoors? Would you prefer a menu that was disinfected between use disposable menu? Or a menu that was on your, on your iPhone, for example, a digital menu? Would you prefer to use silverware or do you think they should have plastic knives and forks? I didn't think that was pretty practical for a state dinner, for example, but who knows? And they asked, how important is it that we provide a form of contactless, less payment at the end of the meal? And you know, so basically, there's some questions out there about what's the proper guidance. And I think from my point of view, you know, if one restaurant is going to do it, I mean, they could be competitive in how they apply guidances. But I think it'd be helpful to have some kind of guidance for them where a committee or a task force working with the county has come up with some ideas and suggestions that will work for Newtown. So that's basically my starting point.
Okay, Dennis?
Okay, thanks. I, I spoke to Amy Strauss, who was quoted in one of the news Courier Times a couple of weeks back. And again, it was about how they formed the Middletown Task Force. But I was curious and I found it interesting that the motivation behind the need for forming a task force in Middletown was kind of like where, where we are in Newtown, where they were concerned about where their financial situation was going to be at the end of this. And it wanted to make sure people got back to work as safely, as soon as possible, but as safely. And make sure that it was done in safety. So overall, their, their idea was to have, their expectation out of this process was to develop some guidelines that were clear to everybody what, what they could do in a yellow situation and what they could do in a green situation. And of course, there's, that information is coming down from the states developing guidelines, the counties developing guidelines, I think they're working together pretty well. And I also, one of the people I talked to also mentioned Erie County as being someplace that was a little ahead of the game in terms of developing guidelines. Let me see, what else, what else can I add to what John mentioned? They did, they did mention if, if there was a, if we did decide to go with an ad hoc committee or a task force, we'd want to make sure it includes some of your larger employers, but also some of your small businesses and, and those kinds of things. And I, there's a couple of other specifics, but we can hold those. I did also want to mention that I spoke to George Gladani, who's kind of chairing the Finance Committee at this point. The Finance Committee is, was mentioned in our, in our meeting on Wednesday. They are willing, already willing and able to meet with us or to meet and be part of a committee. They're not sure how that would work. They were waiting for our work session today to get some guidance from us as to what, what we would want them to be doing and, you know, some timeframes and things. They, they did float some dates, but again, they're waiting for this meeting to take place today to see if we could, you know, give them some, some areas to work on, some more specifics. Let me see. Did I miss anything else? I did speak to somebody at the county level in one of the commissioner's offices. And they do, the county is, and I think that's what John was referring to. Mr. Tostie was part of the County Economic Development Committee that I think will be coming out and announcing the, you know, the fact that they have an economic development committee for this in the next day or two. And there might be some, some money in the county for economic development. Of course, that would be split across the county. I think, I think that, that is the, the general high points there. There were some specifics, Micah, you might be interested in. They were, they were looking at guidelines for opening camps. And I know you had mentioned that in your manager, manager's report. So there was some specifics about things like that, that, that were mentioned, that we can see where this conversation goes today.
Okay, Kyle?
Thanks, Phil. So my, my approach to this is a little more local. I was thinking, I reached out to some local businesses and tried to figure out what items in our, the Township Board of Supervisors purview, we could change or help them get their businesses rolling when that time comes. As far as the, when they're allowed open and how they're allowed to open, that obviously comes from higher up state and county. But one of the things I foresaw and in my discussions was capacity. You know, everyone knows a six foot distance between people, you know, social distancing. And we all know that's going to be relatively tough in a restaurant. You know, if you, if you space tables six feet apart, you're going to basically have quite a reduced capacity. So the, the thought was, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, is how can we expand or help them expand capacity while still follows, following CDC guidelines? So some of the feedback I got was, was moving things outside. Now, I'm not saying we open parking lots, that's not our, our business. What I'm trying to say is I think we loosen our regulations and allowing the property owners to, if they choose to, open parking lots for, you know, tables in, in two ways. One, maybe, maybe we allow, and this is just, this is all just thoughts at this point. We could allow them to have service outside, or maybe even just allow them to set up tables with proper distancing where they can, parking lots or open spaces near their business, where they can allow people to take food to go and go sit at a table outside. That people might be more likely to, you know, rather than drive 20 minutes and have a cold meal when you get home, hey, sit out in the parking lot, it's June, it's nice out, you know? Sitting, sit at a picnic table in open field next to a restaurant with proper distancing, eat their meal while it's fresh and get out of the house. So that, that was two of the big things I thought about with capacity. And you know, there, there would be safety issues with the parking lot. And, and I think we can overcome that. If you think back to when the Green Parrot used to have the Irish Fest, they bring in the tents, they bring in the concrete barriers, they block off the roads so that vehicles, you know, can't go rushing through the tent. So, you know, like I said, it's up to the property owner, it's not up to us. It's my whole thought was what can we do to help facilitate it? And that's what I was looking at. Another thing that I was thinking that's in our purview is our sign ordinance. And we don't allow temporary signs. Maybe we loosen that up a little bit and allow businesses to put signs out, say, yes, I'm open. You know, come down here, these are my hours, or I have, you know, whatever signage they want to put out temporarily. And maybe we waive our, our ordinance for the period of the, you know, the lockdown to help them out. So those are, those are things I think that are in our purview that we could do to try and help. Now, obviously, like, there are things we need to figure out with the safety, but um, those are the top three things there. Now also, I was thinking, from what I understand, and this is something, Mike, I think you may have to look into, there's money available through the county from the CARES Act. So my thought was, how can we utilize some of that money to, well, we could help our businesses or even just help the township run the township? So it's more, it's more, I guess, uh, these meetings with Zoom, how do we, we're having problems broadcasting them live, you know, it's a little complicated. Maybe we look at video gold, talk to them and see if there's a way we can better integrate this kind of meeting with the television system or YouTube or whatever, wherever methods we see fit. So I'm thinking we could possibly improve our, our meetings just for this board and for whatever other boards we, we think are necessary. Maybe improve that system to do that. Also, I had another idea in talking to some people with the CARES Act money. And this is, I, I really believe that businesses should be responsible for maintaining their safe environment based on CDC guidelines. But I'm, I was thinking, the government provided money, maybe we can tap into that. Maybe get some thermal scanners to the township that we could loan out to businesses around township, maybe on a rotating basis, where they can scan people's temperature on their way in, you know? We can't obviously have one for everybody and they're pretty expensive. But we could, you know, maybe on a rotating basis, try and help out that way using the CARES Act. So those are some ideas that I had, you know, like I said, they're just ideas. But I think, I think our biggest problem is going to be, you know, how can we, as Township, facilitate these businesses opening? We're not setting the rules on when and how many people and how the distancing and all that. But maybe we can ease some of our local ordinances to, you know, help them along. So that's all, that's all I had.
Thanks, Kyle. David?
Thank you. Um, I think, you know, based upon where we are currently, I mean, Kyle hit a, hit a lot of the points that I was thinking about doing. But as far as the task force is concerned and developing one, I know that we're thinking about costs and so forth. But I go back to this whole point about the Finance Committee. I think that, you know, we have a lot of different business organizations within our township that represent all local businesses as a body. And we could probably incorporate plenty of those individuals or representative from those individuals to be a voice of reason and report back to us on what they, what those businesses that are part of the organization are feeling or their challenges. And I think that we can get a lot of information back quicker that way, rather than creating, having the Finance Committee go to the businesses to figure it out, when we could just have the business organization. And that could be Newtown Business Association, that could be the Business Commons. The Merchantile Group, is that, that's, is that part of the borough? I forget. But if, if it is, but either way, at this point in time, you know, whoever we can within the zip code or the township, just to kind of get a pulse of what the businesses are going through would be, I think it's better that way. As far as the task force is concerned, you can just pick individuals from each one of those groups to put together. No, and my group at the Finance Committee, they're wonderful people. I worked with them before, obviously for a year plus when I was on that committee. But we need to talk to the business owners, right, directly, right? And why don't we just create that task force that way? That's, that's one of my thoughts. I don't know how much it costs in advertising and all that stuff, but that's just what I thought. In terms of how we get the businesses open and to Kyle's point, lifting ordinances and so forth, excuse me, we would have to work it out from a safety perspective and all those different things. But opening up some of the streets and placing, placing tables for a period of maybe Thursday, Friday, Saturday from, I don't know, maybe lunchtime or maybe one o'clock on. We'll do two things. One, it will help restaurants, because you'll have people inside that are spaced out, have people outside, that'll help their revenue numbers, right? And then also, it creates this walking atmosphere for our town, which I think Brixton was trying to do, that will actually benefit, I think, the rest of the different boutiques that we have in the township of down Sycamore Street and all the, in different parts of our town. So those are thoughts I'm thinking of. And the businesses, obviously, are going to have to police themselves in terms of making sure that their customers and their patrons are safe. But I believe that there's going to be guidelines that they have to adhere to before they actually can open up from a county or state perspective. And if they adhere to those and they're, they're, and I granted, I don't see any business in this township, Orange County, not wanting to make sure their customers and their patrons are safe. Because if that's the case, then their businesses will fail later on down the road. So they want to do everything they can to make sure they're doing it the right way, more very responsible. And I think those, those would be some really good, a really good strategy to help our township and our, and our local businesses. And as far as where we are from a township perspective, from summer, summer recreation, we have to figure out before we get to the businesses, what we do for our camps this summer, I think personally, because that's, that's, that should be number one first. Because if we get that right and we can figure out how to get kids spaced out and counselors and everything like that safe, then I think that's a trickle down effect to making sure that it gives everyone else a little more comfort level that way. So if we can figure out, because, Mike, you can chime in on this, but I know that that's a part of the revenue that we need. And we need to figure that out first and foremost, I think. And then after that, because, you know, businesses, like I said, will police themselves. There's guidelines and a checklist that they're going to have to adhere to. But us from a revenue perspective, you know, Phil and I talked earlier, there's lots of different members of the jointure that, you know, their kids attend these, these camps as well. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything properly, so that we make sure we have enough safety revenue dollars coming in that way. And I think everything will kind of just like flourish from there.
Okay, thanks, David. I, I just have maybe one thing and that's it. I, I think in regards to a task force, just to take the onus off of the Board of Supervisors, I think we have to reach out to the business associations. If they form a task force, it's really not costing us anything, formulating anything, any new committees. And what we could do is appoint a supervisor or two supervisors as contact people to that committee. And that, that person or persons can work as a liaison between the supervisors and the MBA, the Mercantile, whoever those associations may be. I, I would think they have more of a finger on the pulse of the business community and could be more of a contact for us as opposed for the Board of Supervisors establishing some sort of task force either among ourselves or trying to find people to be part of this task force. There are already business people on there, they already know what the situation is. And again, I think this, they're already basically a committee within a committee. So maybe that's who we have to contact. And I don't know who that contact person would be, if it would be Micah, who would call them to see if they'd be interested. And then, you know, John, maybe you would want to be a liaison to this and, you know, sit in on their meetings, provided they want to do this and come back to us and give a report. But I think this is something, again, since they're already a committee, this is something they don't have to worry about ramping up. They could probably call people and have somebody at a meeting tomorrow if they wanted to. So that, that's, that's where I would go. You know, if we're talking about business, we go to the business people. And that's the group that organizes these, these businesses to begin with.
Well, obviously, the task force would have to include representatives from, if we're going to do it, from these business associations. And I know from talking with them, I'm a member of the NBA. And they're pretty competitive in regard to, they want to satisfy their, their needs of their members. And they, you know, don't work closely together with the Mercantile Group, which is more our local businesses in the, in the borough. So, you know, I see some competitiveness there. And I think this is where government comes in. We're trying to put together something that where everybody can work together, put together some kind of structure where everybody can work together in a representative fashion. So you can have representatives from each of these business organizations as part of the task force. And they, of course, report back to their, you know, organization and get feedback from them. And I know talking to people from the NBA, I, you know, they are busy doing their own things and for their members. And, you know, it's just difficult to herd them together in a way, I think, if it's not in some kind of organized way and at a higher level maybe. And that's where I think local government can come in. And that, I don't see this as costing the township money at all, I don't understand that, so.
Well, it wouldn't cost us money if they were the ones organizing the committee. But there's nothing to say that you, as a single supervisor, cannot contact and try to herd them together. Again, I think that this is their, this is their organization. And hey, they should be the ones more concerned and they should be the ones picking the people that they feel would give them the most input.
Yeah, sure.
We're, we're government, we're, we're, we're government as opposed to business. So not that we shouldn't have a say in this, but I don't think we should be the organizers of this. I think they're the ones that are more apt to organize business people, because that's what they are. And again, we could sit in, have input, give back whatever we feel is the guidance. But I think someone had mentioned that businesses will police their own businesses. And I think that, that's, you know, that's what they should be doing, because that, that, that's their livelihood. And again, we could give advice, we can give whatever our input is. But I think the, the majority of the input should come from them. Because this is, this is basically what they do.
Well, I haven't, yeah, go ahead. I have not personally seen them move in that direction at all. I have not personally seen them move in that direction at all, any of them. I mean, they've participated. We have this Newtown Bingo that was started by individuals. It wasn't started by the MBA or, or, you know. And they did not agree to participate in it in a structured kind of way.
Well, that's sad. I mean, that, that tells you something in an essence. I mean, again, that, that's my suggestion.
Phil, you got muted there.
Well, yeah, I'm muted on person, purpose. You guys go ahead and discuss.
As for the, the, the finance committee, the one thing that I had in mind that they could do to help out is to revise perhaps the survey that they were working on and they presented previously to the board. That survey was supposed to help determine how to bring new businesses into Newtown. I thought that was the goal of the survey and part of the purview of the finance committee. So the township already is kind of involved in local businesses. And of course, we want to see them succeed. But, you know, in terms of what's going to be happening in the next six months to a year, you know, we can't expect many new businesses to come to Newtown unless it's an atmosphere where, you know, everybody is on the same level and they know what they're getting involved with. And frankly, I think it's more important that we get the businesses that are already here up and running again. Anything that we can do or anything that we can facilitate, not that we're in charge of it. And anything like the task force is only going to make recommendations in any case, guidelines and so forth. So it's just showing that Newtown is really cares about getting their businesses up and running again. And that, more than anything else, will bring in new businesses when the time is right. But for the finance committee, they already had the survey. You know, I think perhaps if they would care to revise it to bring it into the modern times of COVID-19, that might be helpful.
And I see what David thinks too, since he and I were, when most of those meetings where we discussed the survey, it would, it would not be a revision, it would be a rewrite, I, I believe. And, and that took a little time to do. Not that we don't, I mean, we have more time than I, than I, than I thought we did. We don't have to rush, rush. We do, if, I, I think we need to engage people sooner than later. But the, I, I, going back to the survey, I think it would be a complete rewrite if, if we really, if that was something that the board wants to do, I'm thinking this finance committee would do it. But that would be time consuming. One of the things the, George and I discussed was the finance committee should not be the first point of contact out to the business, business committee. Phil mentioned Micah. I think it would be better coming from the board or Micah or someone at that level to make an engagement with the, the business associations. I just think they need to be involved, but I think it needs to initially come from board of supervisors and or the township.
Well, if we're going to do anything like setting up some kind of a task force, we need to have, like we would set up a regular committee. We need to know who we might invite. And of course, it could go through Micah, that's fine. But, you know, we could start off anyway as supervisors or the finance committee, since they should have or should have had contact with local businesses up until this point to know who best might be selected as invitees to participate in a task force. I mean, that's what I think is perfectly fine for the finance committee to do. And if things take time, I mean, that's all more better argument for starting sooner rather than later. And so far, the finance committee has not been meeting. And I think we want to set up a meeting. I know you've asked them about it, Dennis, so, you know, I hope that they are anxious to help out and that's what I'd like to see. I don't, we need help from all players here.
Dave, the setting up of a committee, the process.
Yep. Ordinance, you're, you're going to need an ordinance to establish a committee. It'll incur fees for us to draft the ordinance, draft the ad, fees to publish the ad. And then you've got to start naming members and advertising the task forces' meetings.
The Middletown has not done, has not done any of that.
Excuse me, wait, hold on a second. We used to have a, a economic development committee at one time. It was already established. Now, the reason we've never gone forward with it because no one wanted to be on this committee. So not only do we have an existing committee, but we have problems getting people. Maybe this will be different because there's the situation. But can we reactivate that committee? Micah, do we still have that committee on the, on the books, so to speak?
I believe so. I have to, I have to check the ordinance to be certain. I, I know they haven't met in my tenure here.
Right. So, I mean, if that's the case, then that's something that we can reestablish. All we got to do is advertise for potential committee members to be on that committee. But we, we've already knocked that out in regards to, we don't have to formulate a new committee. And the economic committee as opposed to the finance committee, which I always thought the finance committee was supposed to monitor our finances. The economic, the economic development committee was supposed to take care of potential business. And I think that's, that's where those two committees were different. So maybe that's what we have to consider is reactivating that particular committee.
Sounds good.
Can you nominate people to be on the committee, Phil?
Excuse me?
Can we nominate people to be on a, the committee or they have to apply, right?
Well, yeah, you can nominate, provided, well, nominate, they still have to want to be on it, so.
The board, of course, the board appoints the members, not like you nominate. The board appoints members, but you can't appoint anyone unless there's interest shown. And generally, when you're filling out the membership on a committee, you ask for resumes and statements of interest and you might even conduct interviews, which is usually a good idea. So it's a process. It certainly is a process. But yes, if you re-up, if you started the economic development committee all over again, you wouldn't have to do a new ordinance.
So maybe that might be the best route. But I really still go back to, I think that if we do this, if we put life back into the economic development committee, I think, you know, we should basically try and think about, like, John, you've had conversations. Kyle, you've had conversations with business owners locally. There has to be some level of interest for something like this if they, if they've got ideas, they've got, you know, concerns. And now they'll have a platform to kind of work that stuff out based upon the encouragement of the board of supervisors. Maybe we could kind of get some names or a list of names together and maybe see if there's any interest.
I certainly have a long list of names collected from surveys, their opinions, working with people who put on the Newtown Bingo. And there was a lot, a lot of interest in that. And I know that there are small businesses, large businesses that are interested in that. Joe Blackburn, for example, wrote to the Brixmore about seeing if they can help promote this Newtown Bingo. So everybody's aware that, you know, the need for this. And a lot of business owners are now complaining to me that, well, why weren't they chosen to be on Newtown Bingo? I wasn't in charge. So they are anxious to, you know, get back into business and they need some guidance. So I think that.
There you go. You have, you have a list, you already have, you know, contacts with those individuals that are very interested in getting this stuff together and kind of like getting through the process. So just put a list of names together that you've spoken to that may have some interest, you think may have some interest. Granted, I don't know how large you want the committee to be. But whomever from, from the people you spoke with that have some interest and are willing to represent some of their fellow business owners in the township, it'd be a good thing to do. I don't know. I mean, Phil, I think it's a great idea.
We already have guidelines on how big the, the size of the committee and so on. So I think a maximum of maybe between five and seven, usually that's what the committees are comprised of, so.
Just so you're all aware, the, the ordinance is still in place for this economic, economic development committee.
When was that enacted, Micah?
Two thousand and two.
Yeah, that, that sounds right.
Well, we, we have to have a diverse committee. So I would appreciate any comments from the supervisor as to the type of person. I mean, you know, you got a, you got a small business locally owned. You got big businesses, you got restaurants, you got the business associations. Well, you know, how many different types of people do we need on that committee?
Well, let me say at this point, we have nobody on that committee. And whoever we get to submit a resume, I don't, I think we should still look at it. Sure, we want diversity, but when we have nobody, we need somebody. So, I mean, let, let's, let's, let's have that problem of having too many people to apply for it. And then we could weed through it and see. But, I mean, I don't think a small business person cannot, is not going to relate to a big business person. Because again, the, the bottom line, the common denominator is business. So let's, let's get the people to want to be on the committee first before we start nitpicking who could be and who can't be on that.
I'm not nitpicking, I'm just saying.
Nitpicking is a word I use. I'm not saying you nitpicked. I'm saying let's not be picky as to who we want on there and who we don't want on there. Let's get people on there first.
I'm just very sensitive because a local business owner contacted me today and she was complaining about this Newtown Bingo put on big franchises instead of focusing on a local business owner who has different problems. They can't, they don't have big budgets like some national chains do. And, you know, she had to close down two of her locations. And, you know, so it's a different set of problems for locally owned businesses, small businesses. But in any case, I think it's, it's a good idea. I can certainly get a bunch of names together and send out invitations. If I, I guess I should pass the invitation language on to get input from you guys because I don't want to send out anything that is not appropriate. Maybe I'll work with Micah on that or.
Well, I think, Micah, probably, do we have the qualification or the guidelines for what, what the economic development committee would be?
There, right, there are guidelines in there. I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
The other question I have is what about Newtown Borough? We've had this discussion before about Borough versus Township. But frankly, you know, we need everybody. I changed my mind on that. I know, I don't know if the, the economic committee allows people who are not residents or doing business in Newtown Township proper or not.
Well, I don't, who, who has reached out to us from the borough, Micah? I mean, I haven't heard anything.
The Mercantile Group, for example.
But why aren't they going to the Borough Council?
That I don't know.
Okay, well, I, I mean, that's, that's also something I would ask. That, that's, that's who they should be contacting. If they want to work with us jointly, fine. But, you know, the mercantile should be going to their local council members because those are the people that represent them. You know, I'm not saying we won't work with them, but I'm just saying, I don't want to get in a situation where the board of supervisors is overstepping their bounds and muscling in on the borough. We should, we should wait or ask them if they want to be involved in this. And then they should start being proactive in what they want to do.
Is there like non-voting members to committees? That could be anybody. I, I, you know, I know that the.
Committees aren't organized that way, but.
The finance committee wanted to include Newtown Borough in its survey, for example. And that wasn't in our purview, we originally argued. So I don't know if we can have a change of heart of that or if we don't. I, you know, I need guidance on that, basically.
Well, then, why don't we, why don't we go into Wrightstown and take care of Wrightstown? And why don't we go into Upper Mayfield and take care of Upper Mayfield? I, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm not trying to be heartless or anything here. But their governing bodies do things without us that they do pertaining to the, to their locale. And I think that that should be the case in this. Again, if they want, they want us to assist with them, that's fine. But I don't think we should be the one establishing something for the borough, just like for any other municipality, unless we are asked. Because then I feel like, again, we're muscling in on a different, different area that we don't belong in. And, you know, if, if, if they were to contact us, and I don't know if Micah's phone's been ringing off the hook from anyone from the borough, I, I, I doubt it. But if they want to, then fine. I, I don't, I don't think that's, again, without our realm of governing, to go into another township and just say, hey, this is what we'd like you to do. Why don't you join us? And, you know, I, 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 there's no problem reaching out to them, but they have to want to do it, in my opinion.
Yeah, but I think that where we are in the, in the whole thing is that there's nothing wrong with extending an olive branch, right? Where, hey, this is what we're planning to do. You are more than welcome to join with us in this. Because right now, we're, we're in a, we're in this pandemic. We're all just trying to make sure that our, you know, municipalities survive. So from a business perspective, right? So I don't see why anyone wouldn't, but I understand where you're coming from, Phil, you know, because they could say no, but at least we did offer an opportunity to join in. I, I think all the businesses would, would welcome that. And it would be a tremendous sounding board for, you get two different perspectives, perhaps. I, I don't, I mean, you have Borough and Township, so, I mean, I don't know legality, how that works on the Borough side. But I think, I think it would be great. I, I obviously, I was, I was on the survey where I wanted the Borough included in the survey originally. And obviously, I still feel that way. But it's based upon an ask. And Dennis, you have tons of friends over there on the Borough Council. Have you heard anything from them? Have you talked to them about what they're dealing with or what they'd be willing to do?
I, I have not, but it would be worth a friendly phone call. And certainly, certainly, at least we can do is make them aware of what we're contemplating. And they can go with, go the direction they, they would think best for themselves. But, yeah, I can make a couple of friendly phone calls. It sounds, it seems to me like we have some consensus around reviving the economic development committee. Not knowing the, the ordinance that set that up, I don't know how the, it's, it's composed of how many members and.
I just checked, Dennis, excuse me. The committee consists of 11 members. And they're all appointed for one-year terms by the board at its organization meeting. And they meet and choose their own chair and vice chair. And the duties are all laid out in the Code of Ordinances. So it's an 11-member committee.
But that's the maximum number. We could, we could have a board of five or seven.
I, I, I wish the language said up to 11, maintaining an odd number to break ties. But it says the committee shall consist of 11 members. I guess if you can't get 11, you could function without it, but that's what the enabling legislation says.
11 seems like a lot, a lot.
Yeah, well, but, you know, economic development, I think they wanted to bring in, as somebody was saying, there's all kinds of interests that might want to be represented on that locally owned. there's all kinds of interests that might want to be represented on that locally owned, chain-owned, um, developers, real estate people, all kinds of different, you know, you, you make five members and, you know, you've got people knocking down the, the walls to get in.
Really?
Doesn't seem that, that's been the case.
It hasn't happened yet, so.
No. No, I agree with you.
Can we make an addendum to up to 11? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could, we can change that to, um, you know, up to 11, maintaining an odd number.
Seven to 11? I, I mean, I just think maybe five is too little, seven is okay, 11 is a lot. I mean, imagine 11 people sitting in one room trying to come up.
Say maximum, we could say maximum.
All right.
You know, maybe we can do that by resolution instead of an ordinance. So we don't have to advertise it. But anyway, that's, that's the detail, that's the detail stuff. You need to decide whether this is the way you want to go. And if so, you know, who, who you're going to, who's going to do the outreach, who you're going to ask. John's going to supply names. You know, you, you've got to figure out how that's going to work, the establishment or the re-establishment of it. And worry about the details, you know, after.
Well, I, I think we should have people first submit, uh, resumes or letters of intent on their own. I know John has a list of people, but then again, I don't want this to be, uh, misconstrued as John's committee. I mean, somebody could say that. So why don't we have people of interest submit resumes? Again, letters of intent, along with what, you know, whoever John knows or whoever we may know that, that may want to be on it. But I, I, I just don't want to see this, again, misconstrued as anybody, my committee, Dennis's committee, Kyle's committee, because we submitted all the names.
Well, we need, we need some kind of a mission statement, I think, if you're going to get people interested.
They probably, they probably have.
There's a mission statement in the, there's a mission statement on, on the books already, John.
Can you read what that is?
Uh, yeah, let me get it up. Hold on.
If we're making modifications, we can add 19 on there, too.
Well, it's the mission of the Newtown Township Economic Development Committee in coordination with the Board of Supervisors and the Township Manager to prepare and recommend economic development policies, goals and strategies for the retention and expansion of business opportunities in the Newtown area.
That's it?
Yep. Goes on to say that you don't, that members don't have to be residents of the township, but must be interested in stimulating the growth of business in the area. Uh, they serve without compensation, appointed to one-year terms, uh, by the Board. They can be reappointed. Board fills vacancies, et cetera. Uh, they have to hold an organizational meeting in January. Obviously, that's already passed, but that doesn't matter. Um, members shall meet and elect their own chair and other offices, officers. Uh, they shall meet a minimum of once a month and date a date uh, determined by the committee, et cetera. They can promulgate, promulgate their own rules and regulations. And then it's got powers and duties. Um, there's 10 powers and duties. Um, then there's a requirement that they submit an annual report to the township. Uh, committee shall submit minutes of its monthly meetings to the Board of Supervisors and all action shall be subject to review and approval by the Board. Uh, so it's a recommendatory board as, as most boards and commissions are.
Can we get that in a PDF sent to us, emailed to all of us so that we have it?
We're, we're still need some kind of official in.
Yes.
Invitation that mentions the, uh, mission statement, but the reason why we are trying to re vigorate this committee and specifically in regard to COVID-19. So.
Well, you, I don't think, John, you're, I don't think you're going to amend this enabling legislation to include that.
Not amend that, the invitation to, to apply to be a member.
That's fine.
Post something on their website, post some.
Micah, yeah, Micah could put that on the website.
I think what we do is we advertise as we would do any other committee. And then any applications or letters of interest we would get, we would put them in with the board packets for, for whatever.
I, I know, but advertise as every other committee. What do you mean by that exactly?
Well, like how we advertise for any committee. We put it on, put it.
I mean, the wording, I'm talking about the wording. That's the wording.
We can work on that. We'll put the mission statement in there. Um, of course, you know, we can, I can circulate it before we, you know, finally post it. So.
Okay.
So as part of the mission, but when we put the mission statement out there, we add some language about the current situation with COVID-19.
Correct.
Right. Mr. Solis, are you allowed as, as members of this, of, of the Board to say, for instance, put something like this on like a social media page or anything like that?
If it's public information, sure.
It's, yeah, I mean, again, there's, there's two kinds of.
I just want to make sure we're, I, I want to comply. I don't want to, I don't want to cause any.
There's two, there's two, there's two kinds of pages, David. There's a, a private page that is speaking only you at, not as a Board member, not for, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, just your opinions and views. And you can post that on an official page. I think we probably ought to let our manager proceed with doing what we need to do. So it's sort of dichotomy there, but.
Okay.
I think we should let, yeah.
Absolutely, I agree. I just wanted to make sure I, you know, sometimes people like to share. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here with that.
Want to be on the same page.
Yep.
I, I had a question for Dave Sander. Uh, the, and maybe the rest of you can answer it, too. If we decide or if we want to, uh, relax some of the rules around outdoor seating or signage, what's the best way, uh, of doing a, uh, resolution, ordinance? Uh, just, just non-enforcement or, or what?
It's not, it's not enforcement, Dennis. The, there, I, I, I strongly caution against official action that may be construed as, um, waiving or taking any other official position with regard to zoning matters. I mean, when you're talking about setting up outdoor seating, outdoor dining may not be permitted in a particular zoning district. So you're bending the rules with zoning. If you're setting up in parking lots, you're taking away from parking, required parking requirements, and that's in the zoning ordinance. The Board of Supervisors does not have any ability, any authority to waive or relax zoning ordinance provisions. Now, you hit the nail on the head with regard to enforcement. Who enforces the zoning ordinance? The zoning officer does. So the directive is, maybe I don't, I don't know that it's an official directive. I'd probably caution against that, but, um, I think that you can make it known that you will desire to have, uh, less active or no active enforcement of provisions that are specifically designed to deal with the COVID-19 situation.
I understand what you're saying about the zoning. I, I, I think I strongly disagree with not doing that. I mean, if, if the state's coming down saying your occupancy is cut to a quarter, it, I don't see why we can't say, well, during that, until the state changes that regulation, we will waive the amount of parking spaces required.
Can't do it. I mean, you don't have authority to do it. You just have to, you don't enforce it. It's the only way you can do it. You cannot say officially, we are reducing the number of parking spaces you require for your use. You don't have authority to do that.
So let's go back to the special event kind of thing. Why can't they ask for a waiver for the events until the end of the COVID-19 restrictions?
Well, again.
The special event permit?
Yeah.
The, the, the special permit, the special event thing. Mike, go ahead, Mike. I, I, I don't think that's even.
I was going to mention that. If, if a group of restaurants, say, say, everybody on Sycamore Street got together and they wanted to close down Sycamore Street for a day and have a, you know, reopening, when they're allowed to do this, a reopening party where everybody would set up tables in the street, sort of like, um, Newtown Day, where you have outdoor tables and seating, sort of just to get everybody in, into town. I, I don't see an issue with that. I, I don't want to, I would rather not get into issuing special event permits for each individual business or ordinance. It doesn't even allow for that.
But if, if it does, I'm not even sure there's an ordinance on the, on the, an official ordinance on the books right now for special events. If there is, I know there was discussion that, that it needed revision. I agree with Micah. If businesses get together and they want to hold something like this on a weekend or each weekend during the COVID crisis, while the emergency order is still in effect, that would be more of a reason for us to say, fine, we know people are going to show up. We know that's going to be out there. We're not going to enforce any zoning provisions and we're going to have police, uh, you know, control of any situations. I, I, I agree with him. I don't think we should be giving, um, you know, Playa Bowls or Mod Pizza the right to set up outdoor dining in their, in their, um, in their parking lots. And again, if, if they want to do it and it's a, it's a wink, wink situation where we're not going to enforce it because it's too difficult to enforce, then so be it. But I don't want to take it, I, I recommend against an official stance to, to relax or waive any zoning requirements.
Well, there's a precedent where the District Attorney's Office is not going to prosecute or enforce opening rules. Um, uh, I guess we don't have to enforce these rules about parking and so on. But again, there's safety issues and somebody needs to have some guidelines about, you know, how to make these things safe in a parking lot, for example.
Well, I think that would be more up to the businesses themselves to come up with something and suggest it to us. That's not going to be our, I don't want to take an active role in telling them how to in a, in what amounts to violate the zoning ordinance. But if they come up with something and say, here's what we want to do, here's the number of spaces we're going to take up. You know, we may say, okay, do, do what you want to do. And, you know, again, I don't want to officially say we're not going to enforce, but we won't enforce.
Well, also you got to take into consideration within these parking lots that you're talking about, are also businesses that are not eateries that will be affected also. I mean, you close off five to 10 parking spots so a restaurant can put tables there. It may affect the whoever, the dry cleaner, the dentist, the whatever, whoever else may be in there. So I think, like, I, I think you said before, this should be something that the, the business, the landlord or whoever the property owner should be granting this. And then they have to come to the township to see, I guess, if it's okay for them to do it. But they're the ones that are going to have to put up with the, um, the arguments from the other tenants that maybe you're taking parking places away from me. So that's where I think it should go back to whoever the prop, Brixmore or whoever, you know, these are like, I think, three different or four different supermarket areas there. Those property owners should be the ones that say, okay, you want to, you want to take up 10 spots? Then.
Work it out with your tenants.
Work it out, yeah, work it out.
It makes sense.
And if they get.
It's also the whole village of Newtown privately owned.
Well, yeah. Well, you got the different ones. You got the, where the Acme is, you got where McCaffrey's is. You got over there where the farmer's market is. Then you got the Goodnose Corner. They're all separately owned. They're not all owned by Brixmore. They're all, no, so.
Well, you know, some businesses are already setting aside parking spots for their own particular use for, uh, you know, drive up and pickup. So they got areas marked off. But they can do that now because the other businesses in the area are not in business. But, um, you know.
A lot of parking spaces on the street nowadays, so that's.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I don't know what's going to happen and these various stages come into play with the amount of parking. And as we know, we've all had complaints about parking in the Village at Newtown, so.
All right, can we, uh, summarize this in some sort of way or, uh, where, where we want to go as regards to Economic Development Committee? Uh, maybe reaching out to the Newtown Business Association? Uh, just a few things to get the ball rolling here.
Well, I, we should just understand what each of us is supposed to be doing. I'm waiting on, uh, Micah, I think, uh, was going to have some kind of invitation wording or something posted to the website about, uh, so that I know if I talk to somebody, that's the official invitation I could send to them. And, um, the process is the process.
That can be like step one.
That could be like what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That can be like step one. And once Micah posts that, then we'd all have something to go, go with and there's.
I'm sure that could be posted today, correct, Micah?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to see the wording. If you're going to pass it around.
All right, well, well, every day we're, every day is a day that we can't get back. So, so I think we've got to move in, in a, in a pretty expedient manner here. Um, uh, John, do you want to contact the Newtown Business Association?
I could do that, but I need to tell them what we're doing exactly. And I need the official announcement, I believe.
Well, you're going to ask, you're going to ask them if they want to formulate a task force of which you would be the liaison for the Board of Supervisors.
Wait, are, are we doing the task force? I thought.
We're not doing the task force. We're going to ask them to do the task force.
So we're going to ask local businesses to set up a task force and we're also going to restart our economic committee.
Well, the economic committee we control. We can't control the Newtown Business Association. So.
I'm not sure if that's a duplicate effort or what, but, um, you know.
Okay, then let's go on to step two. What's step two? Forget step one then, John. Step two, what do you want to do?
I didn't even know what step one was.
Step one was for you to contact someone at the Newtown Business Association to see if they would like to start a task force in regards to helping businesses with the COVID-19.
Fine. I mean, I could do that as a private citizen. It doesn't matter.
All right, cool. But you're also going to be the liaison for the supervisors.
Oh, all right.
When, when they formulate this committee and make it formal, then we will appoint you as the liaison so you could sit in on their meetings and come back to us with a report.
Uh, okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah, but, you know, um, I'll, I'll see what they have to say.
All right, good. That's.
Want to build a shepherder about it, yeah.
That's all you can do. Dennis?
Is that in addition to, uh, reconstituting the Economic Development Committee?
Yes, I think we still need one no matter what. Whether there's COVID-19 or going forward, we still should have an Economic Development Committee.
So my, my step one under that was have Micah formulate the language, run it by us. And then my step two in that process was for each of us to reach out to, uh, people to submit their letter of intent and resume.
Okay. Kyle, anything?
No, nothing else. Thanks.
Okay. David? Is he here? David?
All right, yes. No, I, I'm okay. Thank you. Oh, I, I, actually, what's that?
Any steps that you want to go up? We're, we're on the stairs right now. Come on.
Oh, hey, man. I'm okay with those steps that we have so far. But, uh, let's, I, I like, I like how this went. Let's continue to always work as a team. I'm happy to have happy and healthy discussions and debates. But, uh, let's keep things in-house. If we have any disagreements or things like that going forward. Thank you.
All right.
Did we get any emails from residents submitted?
That'll be, that's a public comment. Um, Micah, you want to read public comment? Public, let's not get in discussions over public comment. Let's, they're just like as if they came up to the podium, made a comment and sat down.
All right, first one, I have four. Uh, first is from, uh, Diane Gutierrez, 15 East, East Bridge Street, Morrisville. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Diane Gutierrez. My husband and I own Jags Barbershop in Morrisville. The current situation and impending expansion of the timeline to reopen our shop is causing severe financial as well as emotional trauma to myself, my staff and my clients. We pride ourselves on maintaining extremely high standard of sanitation. We are ready to employ state mandated guidelines for reopening. We are ready to give input on these guidelines. The fact that our industry has been completely overlooked is an essential, as essential is baffling. Personal grooming and hygiene is an important, important part of maintaining good health for everyone. I wholeheartedly agree, wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Tosti of Fuse. We are ready and willing to adopt additional safety protocols. We are ready to, we are already wearing masks and refusing service to anyone who's appearing ill. Many of our clients have restored, have restored to dangerous underground cuts or trying to do it themselves. We have been out of business for almost 20, we've been in business for almost 20 years and we are not ready to surrender. Second one is from Joel Rab, Six Hibiscus Place, Newtown. None. And I mean, none of my neighbors wear masks when they're out exercising, jogging, walking, et cetera. They do wear them in stores as far as I can tell. My wife and I are the only ones wearing them around the neighborhood that I have seen with one exception, two weeks ago. Can or should the township make a referendum requiring at least suggesting people wear masks in public in order to protect their neighbors as well as themselves? I think it should be considered. Mask when, mask when you are not on your own property. I realize it is something of a political hot potato, but even Brian Fitzpatrick was wearing one in a picture with Trump. Third, third one is from Ethel Haves, no address. Phil, I was quite upset at the last meeting of the Board of Supervisors as I heard John Mack suggest assistance to restaurants when restrictions are lifted following the coronavirus concerns. First, it's not in the purview of any supervisor to offer assistance in his responsibility as a supervisor, but should, should be personal. It is a humanitarian, personal assistance, not the supervisor's. Also, if you've not done this, I suggest that you ask members to discuss with you any matter which they intend to raise prior to a meeting. Courtesy. I have been president of a mission organization for many years and this is standard procedure. Many residents are not supportive of Mr. Max's concerns or consideration and his limited knowledge about many things which he should know, i.e. the jointure. Two, the township finance committee has no responsibility to help businesses within the township, none. And many parking lots in the commercial areas are not dedicated to the township. So there's no way you can approve the use of them. And absurdly for the public to be seated there. And the final one is from Lynn Buckleton at 52 Kirkwood Drive. Wondering if the committee, what the committee thinks about the recent post from David Whitehall? I hope everyone has read it. I can circulate this email because it has a link to a Facebook page on it. Basically, there's a great deal of hypocrisy in not opening some while opening others. The public is not clear in understanding true economic impact here. And it would be good to have more transparency from the committee in that regard. We have a lot of information about the impact of the illness, which is helpful. But in regards to how the budget is being hit and how long it's really sustainable for, has not been very clear. The public is not clear in understanding the true economic impact here. And it would be good to have more transparency from this committee in that regard. We have a lot of information about the impacts of the illness, which is helpful. But in regards to how the budget is being hit and how long is, is really sustainable has not been very clear. I'm also running, wondering about schools and camps reopening in Newtown. As a mom of two children and an active participate in a Newtown Moms Group, it would be great to have a call with some subject matter to expect, subject matter experts to discuss the topic with parents. I can, I can speak to the summer camps a little bit, which I sort of wanted to get into anyway. As far as the summer camps go, we're trying to hold off and make a determination on that. The status of them by the end of the month. Our registrations are, are down. Which obviously isn't good for the financial aspect of it, let alone the fact that to bring on the staff to be able to maintain the, the park or the recreation facilities. If we're even allowed to have camps by then. It doesn't offset the, the, the cost of, or the loss in revenue that would be required to pay for them. Thirdly, we have, we have, a lot of our camps are held at school district facilities because they have the bathrooms and the, and the facilities to be able to handle camps of that size. We still have no answer from the school district, even if they're going to allow us to use that, those facilities this summer. So we're trying, we're, we're, we're trying to hold off as long as it's feasibly possible here to make these, these tough decisions. Obviously, there's a lot of training that goes into, involved with summer staff camp help as well. Let alone the fact that we need to get the final okay from our insurance provider once guidelines are issued on how we even handle this. It's not like we can run an outside summer camp all summer, you know, and then thunderstorms come and kids have nowhere to go if they're stuck outside. So it's a very, I understand, everybody wants them open. Believe me, I want them open. As far as, you know, the impact of, of the revenue on the township. We're sort of giving it every, every chance we can, whether to, to, to make that decision, whether to have, hold these camps or not, to not hold these camps. I've been in discussions several times with other managers of other towns surrounding here. And also with the, the county commissioners regarding public camps. And, and just, we're not there yet to be able to make a final decision, but there's a lot to consider when running these things. It's not something to be taken lightly, especially right now in the middle of a pandemic and putting staff and, and children at any sort of risk. So I just wanted to put that out there that we are still evaluating that heavily. And we'll continue to evaluate it as, as long as we can, can do that.
I was just going to mention, Mike, it is important, and a couple of my phone calls, people brought that up.
Yeah, if there's, if there's, if there's any way that we can accommodate this and even if the numbers are down and we can accommodate these camps for any, you know, any number of people, I'll be more than happy to do it. It's just, we need some definitive answers from several different arms at this point.
Okay, thanks, Micah, for that update. Any old business? Any new business? Okay.
I'm afraid to bring up new business. No, I really don't have any new business.
All right, I guess, just a motion to, a very good meeting, very good discussion. And I guess we'll all be back here on Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, next.
This is the 26th.
Yeah, I'm sorry, next.
Okay.
All right, see you guys. Stay safe.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.